Recording in progress.
Good afternoon. Board of County Commissioners are holding a regular meeting on February 1st, 2022. The county commissioners Alvin Shaw, Ronnie Mays, Lauren Brown, County Manager Derek Woodman, County Clerk and Attorney Chris Archileta present. I believe remain who may not be present via Zoom to be presented on this case of law. We call the meeting to 1:30. If you haven't done so, please silence your phones. We'll start with the place of allegiance for the members of the Senate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any disclosure or comments, Senator?
No.
That was her. This is Google or justice, did you hear that? I have a justice in the area. I had a motion.
Mr. Chairman, to approve the agenda as presented.
A second. The motion is second, I'll just clear.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Last time to vote comments. Reminder, one call upon please, prosposto, you will state your name and address for record in three minutes. First up is Mary Beth Snyder. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Beth Snyder from Archuleta County here. I want to ask, oh, sorry?
Could you publicly say your address?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Forty Rich Big Court, Pagosa Springs. I wanted to ask Alvin if you could please help push San Juan Basin to public health, to have meetings in person, or to have a meeting with people of this community where we can carry on a dialogue. Could you, I'm just asking that you push that issue because they're not listening to me. Thank you.
I think you read it off the last page. Okay, Bethany Jones.
Hi, my name is Bethany Jones. My address is P.O. Box 3595, Pagosa Springs. Hello, my name is Bethany Jones. I am a resident of Archuleta County. I am an entrepreneur, I'm a business owner, certified self-talk trainer, a wife, and a homeschool mom. I'm here today to address a few concerns that are steadily rising among our community. In the Pagosa Sun article from October 14th, 2021, both Alvin and Ronnie stated, "I won't be wearing a mask for the San Juan Basin Public Health meeting" reference. Clearly, you value your freedoms. As our elected public officials, we are asking you to stand for ours. Alvin, you sat on the board for San Juan Basin Public Health as a representative for Archuleta County. At last week's meeting, comment after comment after comment after comment was made by Archuleta County residents stating their dissatisfaction with the dictatorship of Leanne Jollin. When it came time for your update, all we heard was, "The discovery committee needed more time." Nothing about San Juan going into our high school promoting the discriminatory discriminatory Junior Heroes Program despite the fact that at our last school board meeting, it was packed with upset community members and parents. Our superintendent has since resigned. Nothing about Leanne's comment in our paper, and I quote, "Keep this emergency going as long as necessary," and nothing about the long presentation full of models, but little actual scientific data that Leanne said at that meeting. In this position, you represent our county, which boasts of being conservative and pro-freedom. The Health Department does not make laws or declare unimpeasigemergencies. And we need, we need you to stand up to this. On August 17th, 2021, a mere five months ago, I sat in this very room while you all signed a reaffirmation of the Constitution. There is a comment to the effect that the board wasn't into feel-good resolutions, and this was already part of the job. People of this county are awake and aware and watching as sheriffs from around the country, millions in Canada, you guys are watching that, stand against unlawful mandates, uphold our Constitution, and our Bill of Rights, as is, no editing needed. As Rich Valdez, our sheriff, felt compelled to do before this affirmation was signed. Help me understand, our public servants, waving their Republican flags, are attempting to segregate and enforce masks, saying things like Warren did three weeks ago, and I quote, "I'm not going to argue the constitutionality of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. It's not a law, it's our policy." And a mere eight days later, you sat at a crowded table across from me at Benny's Restaurant with no mask, not even an agreement with the NRA Speaker who referenced the scandemic multiple times. In case you have forgotten, policy will never uphold and accorded law. However, our constitutional and our Bill of Rights will. This kind of hypocrisy must stop. People in this community are losing faith and growing frustrated rapidly. I'll tell you what we want. We want truth, integrity, honesty, transparency. We want you guys to stand for our public rights and our freedoms. And we're asking if you would be willing and able to do that for us. Thank you.
Bethany Cole.
Hello, Bethany Cole, P.O. Box 5976, Pagosa Springs. I'm actually going to echo what Bethany Jones just said. On August 17th, we sat in this room. This entire board signed the affirmation, reaffirming the protection of our constitutional rights. Mr. Shaw, you did state that you don't do feel-good resolutions, but due to the circumstances, you felt inclined to do so. Are these circumstances tangible? You also have stated that you can't please everyone. Well, we're not asking you to please everyone. We're asking you to uphold your oath to the Constitution of the United States, to uphold the Constitution of Colorado, and to protect our God-given rights. In fact, I asked you all to do this as far back as June 2020, then again, September 2020, and October 2020, and the list goes on. When this board states that the community needs to voice their concerns, how do we go about doing that? We have seen our concerns fall on deaf ears, and the resolution reaffirming our rights goes ignored. How much louder can we get? Perhaps the board should be required to take constitutional law class. The Fourteenth Amendment gives us due process. It guarantees this equal protection under the law. So why in the world are people being strict of their rights? Why are our elected officials failing to stop discrimination of the free people? Over the last two years, we have seen a new form of discrimination arise, and we have to stop it. The Declaration of Independence says that everyone has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Your duty is to protect those rights of the citizens of this county. It also states that our elected officials, if they fail to do so, we have the right to resist and the duty to remove them. Look around you. You've had two years to uphold the rights of the people of this county, yet have failed to do so. We, the people, have the duty to make that change. What you see happening all over the world right now is a great awakening. People reclaiming their government for the people, by the people. What side of history would you like to be on? Thank you.
Okay, time to vote comments. Treasurer Semi in the number four, Elsa White. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Elsa White, Archuleta County Treasurer. I reside at nine chief of court. Present two, please, section thirty dash ten dash seven oh nine. I refer to the view is called Archuleta County, Archuleta County Semi in the report. This report gives you information starting July 1st through December 31st, has beginning balance, not just for the county, but all our taxing authorities, because what we have collected, but any expenditures and ending figure for December 31st. After presenting this to you, I have signed it, and to the best of my knowledge, this is accurate and current, and then I will take it to the Senate Office to publish. Okay?
Any questions?
And as you can see, this second half, we spent more than we do again.
We did see that.
Yes.
I don't have any question, but I do appreciate all the work. I know this is fairly involved, and I appreciate your office working on that.
Thank you.
And the consultation with, I assume the other commissioners, getting what this offers?
Yes. Try to keep going for lines of communication. I think that's very important.
I did too.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been four days, the recess regular meeting, after being the liquor board. There you go. Are you writing this right to you?
Yes. This is an application for the special events permit for Pagosa Springs Chamber of Commerce to sell the malt painless and sugar liquor at the P.O. P.O. Clubhouse located at 234 Ave, Pagosa Springs, for the Pagosa Springs Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting on February 9th, 2022. The sheriff has been notified of this event. The profit fees were collected, and the premises was posted for the required ten days prior to today's hearing. The financial impact to the county is the fees paid for the county fee schedule and staff that can disapprove of this special event.
Any questions or comments? That's, that's a good motion. Mr. Chairman, to approve the board's agenda presented.
No.
No, I apologize. Oh, sorry, I was one ahead. I move to approve the special events permit. There we are. Pagosa Springs Chamber of Commerce for their event on February 9th, 2022.
A second. Motion is second, I'll just clear that.
Aye.
Right. Excuse me. One item for consent intended for official. There's on that.
Sirs, this is a ratification of transfer of ownership for the retail hotel and restaurant license for Keep to LLC DBA Coyote Moon Bar and Grill. The hotel and restaurant license for Coyote Moon Bar and Grill is transferred to Keep to LLC in room 21. Shortly after the county approved the transfer, a change in the ownership, refer of Keep to LLC required revised transfer of ownership. The state approved revised transfer on January 19th, 2022, which required an updated county license. Chairman Shaw signed the updated license on January 19th, 2022. This agenda item is ratified and assigned license.
Thank you. I have a motion. Mr. Chairman, to approve the liquor board consent agenda presented. Motion is second, I'll just favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, was during the liquor board, 1:42, and reading the regular meeting. On the consent agenda.
I.A. is the payroll warrants and purchase cards for January 19th, 2022 through February 1, 2022. Regular meeting minutes of January 18th, 2022. Ratification of letter of support for 2022 wood installations funding opportunity. And C is a consideration approval of renewed ground lease agreement for Hanger 511-d. And E is a consideration approval of renewed ground lease agreement for Hanger 511-g. And F is consideration approval of assignment of Hanger ground lease for Hanger B3. And G is consideration approval of work and financial plan for the 2022 wildlife services program. And H is consideration approval of 2022 county merit system certification. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a question. Mr. Chairman, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Motion is second, I'll just favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. On the old business.
And I apologize. I don't know what the, the resolution of this.
Eleven.
Eleven.
For the all businesses, say?
Well, it would be the first one in line, so that would be a question.
So I.A. is the consideration of resolution 2022-11 to further extend the declaration of local disaster. If you remember, back on December 31st, 2021, I, Derek Woodman, signed the declaration of local disaster for the, to submit to the governor's office for the propane issue that Archuleta County residents were experiencing. This was actually submitted in two different paths. One was the local disaster declaration that was submitted to the governor's office, and the other path was through civil action through the attorney general's office. Governor's office did not have a lot of interest in hearing this, but the attorney general's office did. And so consequently, there was a civil action brought into the O.P., applied to attorney general's office, that in effort received the same outcome. And so it is the recommendation that we do not need to extend the local declaration of local disaster. The attorney general's office, civil action, is still in place.
Questions?
I have none.
No questions, thank you. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, to not adopt resolution 2022-11, further extending the declaration of local disasters presented.
A second. The motion is second, I'll just favor.
Does it, I know Derek was asking earlier about the resolution of yourself.
If it doesn't pass, then number 11 goes to the next resolution.
Okay.
Is there a question, second, still standing?
Still stands. Yes.
All right. All's a favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. On the I.A.
Hi, Mary, I'm Missy, here at Legal. Attorney Weaver is out of the office, so it's easier for me just to do this. The ARPA funds that you awarded in September 2021 required a, there's a lot of compliance requirements for this, so we put together a grant agreement for the recipients of the ARPA funds. And five of the recipients have returned these agreements, and it's, it's basically just telling them that they agree to, you know, comply with all the rules and regulations of the federal government, with the Treasury's requirement of us in order to give them these funds. So this is for Healthy Archuleta, Habitat for Humanity, A Safe Place in Pagosa Inc., Archuleta County Housing Association or Authority, and the Broadband Services Management Office, which is now being overseen by the CDC. So the CDC signed this agreement on our behalf. And we recommend that you approve the agreements. There will be more probably at the next meeting.
Any questions?
No, sir.
I have a question. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the grant sub recipient agreements for the higher diversity plan, sub recipient awards for Healthy Archuleta Inc., Archuleta County Housing Authority, Habitat for Humanity, A Safe Place in Pagosa Inc., and the Pagosa CDC as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, I'll just favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is a consideration and appointment of county representatives to the rodeo grounds management committee. At the last meeting, you approved, you adopted resolution 2022-10, approving the rodeo grounds and fairgrounds joint use and development agreement. Section three of that agreement stipulates that a rodeo grounds management committee be formed, comprised of two members appointed by the BOCC, two members appointed by the Board of Directors of Western Heritage Events Center, and one member appointed by the HOP fund. We are asking Robin Young and Misty Smith to serve as the appointed representatives, and Tim Hardman to serve as an alternate, and all three individuals have been asked and to agree to do this.
Any questions?
Yeah, maybe just a comment. I'm glad to see this funny get on the ground and get moving for the public, be able to utilize this, use the.
I'll have to, have to do that. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Robin Young and Misty Smith to the fairgrounds management committee with Tim Hardman as an alternate or president.
Second.
The motion is second, I'll just favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. On the new business. Elsa White.
We're all in one day, so I'll have to. Elsa White, Archuleta County Treasurer. I'm asking the Board of County Commissioners to accept resolution 22-11. Within this resolution, it gives you the financial institutions that are here locally, plus a couple that are, that are out of Archuleta County. I'm just asking you if you would approve these, from the Bureau to invest whatever funds we collect in our office.
Commissioners, any questions?
I, I don't, I don't know if it's, it'd be prudent to read the list of the, these institutions, just so the public is aware.
Okay, that's fine. Sure. We're here, here locally in Archuleta County, we have Bank of Colorado, Bank of San Juan, the Division of Wager Bank, TBK Bank, formerly known as Citizens Bank, First Southwest Bank, Real Grand Savings and Loan, Vals Fargo Bank. Outside of this area, we have Peak Investment Management and Hilltop Securities. We do use, I use personally for the county, Call Trust, which is up in the Debra area. The reason we use them is because they give us a lot better interest rate and return on our money. But those are the banks that I'm asking you to approve.
Right. Questions or comments? I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution 2022-12. Is it still one? All right, okay. 11, approving and designating institutions with which the county treasurer, main bank, and invest county funds as presented.
Second. The motion is second, I'll just favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I should work y'all, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Yeah, totally. Get it all over with.
One more.
So, resolution 22-12 is cancellation of what I bill and the assessor bill are uncollected tax accounts. Last year I presented, I think we had like over $12,000 in accounts that we felt we were unable to collect. This year, I only have one, believe it or not. We have a mobile home account that is delinquent $691, $69161. And the reason we are taking it to as uncollectible is because the assessor has gone out and reviewed the property and the mobile home, and it burned down. So that's why we wanted to go ahead and take, wipe these taxes out, get off our taxable. No reason for us to keep accruing interest on these taxes. We're not going to collect. I am working with the assessor's office with several other mobile homes that we are trying to locate, first of all, determine if they're livable, and, and then we'll probably have those on next year's cancellation of taxes. But that front mask means for $69161 to be taken off the taxable, please.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, sir.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution 2022-12, approving the cancellation of uncollectible tax assessments as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, I'll just favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I have a C.
Consideration of resolution 2022-13, approving the Archuleta County fee schedule pursuant to CRS 30-11-108. Board of County Commissioners are charged with establishing fees charged for county services. This resolution updates certain fees. Suggested amendments or addition to the fee schedule are highlighted in yellow to ensure the transparency on how the county represents changing fees.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. I had a couple phone calls on the short-term revenue fees on this, and I had stated to them they had not, they had not increased, so, and didn't even show in the yellow over here on this chart either.
Page down, you'll see the highlighted.
But I just wanted to.
My error, thank you.
I just wanted to vocally clarify for the concern of the citizens that were calling and asking.
Okay. Is there just two?
I mean, it was this, I'm sorry. The State Department of Revenue increased their liquor license fees, so because that's part of our county fee schedule, I had to do that. I asked department head, hey, I've got to do this license, or this new fee schedule, does anyone want to add anything? And the sheriff's office made a couple of changes to theirs, and the building department added on building permit extension fees. And I believe that's it for changes. There was nothing from developmental services at all.
Yes, being a state statute county, you have to comply with the state laws.
Okay, others in, any other comments? I have a couple.
I have a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution 2022-13, amending fees for county services and information as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, I'll just favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. I.A. Bethany, Beth.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Matt Archuleta from Facilities Maintenance, Departments with the County. Consideration of approval from you guys to approve the contract for valid VIP cleaning services for all of our county facilities, for services that are already in place. So basically, perhaps spelled out in there, what we're currently doing, and there's a little in there for the, it's kind of two D, two B determines, excuse me, for the facilities that are coming online, i.e. the new clubhouse and the DHS facility. So once, you know, we can get people in those offices, then we'll get established and amended contract. So just ask me for your approval for this, please.
Questions?
I appreciate work on this. I know I said a bit, but thank you for speaking with and getting that from me.
Thank you, man.
I really appreciate you being finished. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the valid contract services with valid VIP cleaning LLC as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, I'll just favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I.A. Gentlemen, this is consideration of approval of an intergovernmental agreement with La Plata County with adult protective and child welfare services. This IGA provides the terms and conditions for La Plata County to assist Archuleta County with adult protective and child welfare services. And just with the staffing issues that is taking place over at DHS, we were in kind of a bind for supervisory components. And so it's, La Plata County has graciously offered up their services to assist DHS, Archuleta County DHS, with those on-call supervisory components, the required services for adult protective and child welfare services. We're confident to say that by the end of February, we should have some of the supervision certifications in place. And so this agreement was excellent to have as a backup. Probably won't be necessary for government of the bottom of the month.
Questions or comments?
So this just goes to the end of February?
It, well, that's probably what we will end up using it for. It may end up staying in extension. And we have it in place for. It may end up staying in extension, uh, when we have it in place for, uh, till June.
Okay. I, I would strongly probably encourage that, that it can get done as soon as possible. I mean, the, the only reason is, is I know La Plata County and I'm in Archuleta County and, uh, we're different.
No doubt. And the biggest, we have, it's a eight-week certification process. And so we've been, uh, staff's been involved with that process already. And so it should be able to wrap up your.
Yeah, I know you've been looking hard trying to get into it, so I appreciate that.
The other?
No, sir.
I have any more questions?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the interregional agreement with La Plata County for adult protective and child welfare services as presented.
Second. Another motion is the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The delivery note for the business for the board. During the second clock.